To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
And ma'am chair, I do have an addition to make the agenda. Under the consent agenda, under item C, we need to add Mr. C D Williams, intermediate principal resignations. Exactly. That's the only change I have. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, so now, approval of the agenda. There's the man. Approval of the agenda for tonight.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll go in second.
And while Dale gets seated, Mr. Peterson, you have delegations?
I do not have delegations.
Oh, sorry. Yes. All in favor of the approval of the tonight's agenda meeting?
Hi.
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 Bye.
And no, Mr. Thornton, I do not have any delegations.
Do you want me to take over?
Sure.
Okay, so. So we're on to the proposed consent agenda. Any discussion, questions, comment? Clarifications? The motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Hi.
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 Right. Alright, that was unanimous. We'll move on to public comment. Once, going twice. Okay, any written economy? Here's a whisper. I guess we'll move on to principal reports then, first thing. Chris Hansen is.
You should have, the board members should have a list of six items that Ms. Hansen had a previously scheduled family engagement. I want to say for the record, she's very proud mom because of course her son graduated from W C over the weekend. It's a lot of family in town, so congrats to Ms. Hansen's family. But she, she gave you a list of some events that have happened and then upcoming events for the rest of the school year. So if you have anything that you'd like to hear in addition to this, though, I can get with Ms. Hansen tomorrow when she gets back and get some extrapolation. But it's, it's a pre-con strike, quite frankly.
Do we need to read this? So it's part of the record or?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to Mr. Williams, intermediate.
Hello. So, right now we're going through testing, that's our big push. But along with that, we have a family reading night at about 120 math night. A couple of weeks ago, so that was, that was really awesome to see them out and spend time with us. So, family reading night, our 37th, 38th, May 19th. It'll be at the, it'll start in the M B R, just like our math night. This year, we are pushing to try to do K five field day. We're looking at June 7th. We're gonna try to make it from the beginning of the day until about 1 o'clock. And we're working with the lunch ladies to try to do something that's somewhat picnic-y for lunch that day. But we're excited. We have about 15 events that we want to put on. Plus, we're gonna have some events at the end that are classroom-driven. And then the winners of those will get to go against the staff, so we're pretty excited about that. But we just want to have a good time with the kids. I know that she's probably got, what, June 8th for kinder graduation. And then on the 10th, our fifth graders, we do a football ceremony first thing in the morning. And then kind of like they do, the eighth graders move up to the high school. And that about 15, 20 minutes later, the fifth graders move up as well. So, so it's kind of a cool deal. Everybody kind of loves it. And so we'll be shooting for that on the seventh day. For them, yes. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you. Congrats.
Yeah, congratulations very much.
Good luck.
I appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Fatt.
Good evening. It seems like it's been a long time since I've been to you in person.
Without a mask.
All of the above. My agenda for today, as far as the middle school stuff, well, of course, we, like Mr. Williams said, are smarter balance testing. And we're working through that. We've trying always to figure out how to do it better. And since it's been such a long time, I think, you know, we'll have, after this stretch, we'll have a better idea how we want to, in the future, attack that with some strategies. As far as around the teachers, we are coming up quickly on the middle of May and teacher evaluations are, are at the forefront.
Yeah.
We don't have much time and they know it, and we know it. And we're working, talking about student growth goals and what went well and what we might do differently next time, but, but it's, it's been a good round. And really, for the first time, we've been back in full-on T P A, but it's gone pretty smoothly. We're happy to be staffed for next year, at least at this point. We're pretty close to fully staffed. Yeah, yes, absolutely. But, but that's a good feeling of just coming into the end of the year, knowing that we don't have holes, too many holes to fill. And, and so we're optimistic there. One thing that we wanted, I wanted to point out is that we have a computer science class being taught at each grade level. We're using, working with the Amazon STEM program and, and there's more details that there, but feel pretty good about being able just to offer that introductory stuff. So then as they move forward and they have an opportunity for, to get, to dip their toes into it a number of times. So that's one of the things that we're doing. We also have a computer robotics course that's timed at the 7th grade. So we're doing some forward-thinking things and I'm proud of those things. So just so you know, upcoming events on May 27th is our community service day. Something new for you guys who may not have heard about it, or having had middle school kids, Ricky might have heard of that. But we have caves, that's our advisory class. And on that day before Memorial Day weekend, we dedicate the day to give back to the community, to the school, through a variety of student-chosen activities. And you're more than welcome to come and, and watch the work or drop by. One of the groups is doing a car wash to fundraise, maybe you can come do the car washed. And another group's cleaning the bike trail. And another group's planning to go up to the cemetery and clean around some of the headstones. So variety of, of activities in service. And so that's, that's really one of the, the cornerstones. I mean, it's only one day, but we talk all day about being kind and using our character strong curriculum, but this is a time to, to give it more feet. So we're proud of that. Also, we have Camp Booton coming up, reinstated that, that's pretty huge. And in this three years since we've been to Camp Booton, so we're, we're knocking cobwebs off old plans and trying to make sure we're, we've got everything covered, but we'll pull it off. And, you know, we've had retirement since then, and so, you know, new people are having to step up and bear up to the challenge. We have a parent day on June 8th, which would be a great day if, if you wanted to see what goes on at Camp Booton. Educational activities, the the content contest, you know, there's challenges, all kinds of things that go on there. It's, it's more than just the camp and the waving flags and doing hikes. We do all kinds of things. And, and it's a great learning opportunity for many kids who really haven't been outdoors. And then on June 9th, we are having our 8th grade promotion ceremony at the gym at 6 o'clock. Again, it's, it's, you're more than welcome to come. And certainly you're invited. It's not an obligation if you can't make it, but it's, we just recognize the kids in front of their families shake their hand and give them a certificate and, and push them on up into the next grade. The next morning, what they do, a walkout. Where in front of the students that are there, we call their name and they walk out of the gym and up to the doors. And then they, once they gather, they all walk up to the high school to take part in some of that, you know. So again, those are things that are happening around the school. And with any luck, on June 10th, the buses will be back in time to unload the kids so they can load up to go home. It's, it's a busy week, that last one, so. And also, we're having a, on June 9th, the, the 8th grade will be having kind of a celebration party at the court. It's not, no longer the Court Club, what's it called, the Pacific Clinic? So anyway, those are the middle school happenings. Any questions?
Decided not to keep the 8th grade graduation in the parking lot.
There was, there was some call for it. But I was happy with not doing it in the park.
Understood.
Hello. So I guess I'll just come up, I wasn't called, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
The last one up, so I do have dates for you all. And so I sat down today and went, oh, I wonder what they want to know about. So you basically have it broken down by weeks and what's coming up and I'll give you one minute. So first of all, I want to celebrate some things. Our leadership class did a great job with the Easter egg hunt. That occurred weeks ago because I've been here, but a lot of kids volunteered and it was all over the city. And, and they had a great time. It was rainy, cold and all that, but a ton of people came out and the kids actually enjoyed it and had a great time. Also, we had a high school math night, which we hadn't had since I've been here. We were honestly, I was looking like 0 to 10 people, I didn't know. 25 families came and 50, over 50 people told. So it was really well-attended. We're trying to change the paradigm on math at the high school. They're making it a little bit more enjoyable. I mean, there's a time in that middle school years where the kids go from loving in elementary, we all remember that. And then all of a sudden, there's some time where kids kind of get a negative view. And we're trying to, to, to change that paradigm and so forth. So that was awesome. I know you guys talked with our gear-up lady the last time, and so she's got a lot of great trips going on, so that's all on there too. What the last, when was the last meeting I came in? Maybe it was meeting before. I overheard somebody who was not happy because it's hard to find this room. So, I mean, it is, because I've had people, literally, they come, they come to the front of the high school, they go to the back of here. Like, I mean, there's nothing that really says like, welcome here, this is the front, come on in, even though there's a big sign. And so, Mr. Lake, and he made this for us to put outside the door here. And so the question is, we want to put it on the wall or do we want to put it on a stand that can go up each time we have a meeting? That's the question.
I say the wall.
The only reason I'd watch the wall, it's easier for something's damage to occur by sun and/or vandalism. So you guys make that decision. And you let me know. And Mr. Lake said he's more than happy to be able to do whatever you guys need to do. If it's going to go on the wall, then obviously I'll get it to me and let's make it do that. That makes sense, okay? Prom was awesome. Kids showed up, they had fun, it was loud. They sang about every other song that was up that night, they just felt it. There was one point where the music went out, but the kids kept singing. I was like, holy crap. They could, they're sitting there trying to fix it because there's no DJs anymore, we bring the music ourselves, okay? So honestly, it was two and a half hours from 8 to 10:30 on Saturday. I thought the room would be too small, but it was just big enough for the 200-plus kids we had in there, which is over half our student body, which is pretty amazing, to be honest. If half the student body of Richmond went to prom, I don't know where they'd have it, you know? So that was really fun for the kids. Boys' baseball is at district tomorrow at 4 o'clock, if you're available. It does cost to get in because it's a district tournament. And so, and they got first in league. They were coach champions, but they actually, we had the draw. So we got first place in the league to be able to play below a seat on the other side of the bracket. And then we'll play again, I believe, on Friday and then Saturday. Girls' softball still has two more double headers. And as I talked to one of the assistant coaches over here earlier, if they just split, then they'll end up winning the league also. But hopefully, Mr. Fitz said his math's pretty good. If they just win both, then they'll win it outright. So, you know, I trust him. Mr. Henry, your board passes, ship them into the district. Well, then bring your board pass. Or I can turn away anyway. And then graduation, just so you know, has been determined that it will be on a football field this year. If you came last year, it was opposite that. But because of one student that's going to have to use a wheelchair to get on for graduation, we're putting it down below. And the graduates will be on each side of the stage many years ago, before COVID. That's how we did it. And they were, that way the parents could see them on the sides and then they'd come up and get their diploma. So that's how that'll be. And then this week, I'll be sending out an email for anyone in the school district that wants to hand the diploma to their student that's graduating, they can do that. And that's up to each family to make that decision.
How many do we have, you know?
Pardon?
How many do we have?
There's a few. Yeah, or I want to say, I want to say today, we're roughly going through and I was like, just give me a list so I can go through everything and set it out, not miss anybody. Because that's the biggest key, is making sure it's invitation to do it. And to be honest, about half turned it down and then the other half come up and do it. So I just think it's a really great thing for a parent to be able to do. So, great. So, like I said, I gave you guys the, basically the rest of the year and activities and everything. Hopefully that'll help you out. The, the wonkiest thing is having graduation on the same week as Memorial Day. Because you have to come back and they start off right away, finals and the senior week gets going fast on that way. Otherwise, it's all there. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll move on to new business. Our first is the resolution 4-2022, our W I A approval.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Thornton. Resolution 4-2022 is for the more experienced members, it's one that we see every year for, obviously, our two new members. This is an annual resolution where Ben City High School, Ben City in general, Ben City School District says that we will be a, a paying member of the W I A and turn over governance of the athletics to the W I A for all the, the different rules and officials and all those different types of things. It does take an annual approval. You know, this has been something that's, that's been in place, gosh, since the mid-'70s. So this is nothing new, but this is, I think that this is important. And I, I know that Mr. Henry and, and Mr. Denmore would agree that it does mean something to be a part of the bigger state organization when it comes to athletics, because the, the rulemaking, all of those types of things, obviously come from a much higher authority than us as a single school district or even in all 95, it's an entity above everybody else. So just as O S P I governs the instructional side of peace and the personnel side of peace in education, W I A oversees the athletics. So it's my recommendation to the board that is, as we typically have done the past, we approved the resolution to continue our partnership with W I A for the coming year.
Do we have any discussion, questions? Okay, well, the chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve resolution 4-2022, W I A.
I'll second.
Okay, then moved and seconded. All those in favor? Hi.
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 Thank you very much.
On to elementary school discussion.
Yeah, I, I think it's an appropriate time. First off, I want to reiterate what, what the board said earlier. Congratulations, Mr. Williams, on his, his new career endeavor. It's well-earned. And I wish we weren't in a position of, of having this discussion. But quite frankly, I think at this time, in our current state of affairs with, with the state and their, their a lot of, well, some of the historical stuff I'll go into, but I really wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask questions and consider, quite frankly, the move to unify the primary and intermediate school moving forward under one principal and an assistant principal. At the time that we made the decision as a district to separate into two buildings, there was a very good reason behind it. And that is, that's when schools were still, quite frankly, penalized monetarily for being on priority status, being one of the lower school districts in the state, or the school buildings in the state. And previous administration had made the wise move to go ahead and separate the two buildings to be able to focus specific dollars on the grade levels that were most specifically in need. And at that time, it was the primary school. I think that this is an opportunity for us to revisit that. And because the, the state has done away with the priority designation and the monetary penalty for it, I think now would be a time for the board to consider allowing us to move forward and do reunification. And I think the major advantages to that, quite frankly, are simply no more confusion about what dollars go to which school and why. We've hired a number of staff since, since that separation's been in place. And quite frankly, since the, the penalties for the priority status have gone away. So we have staff who still don't understand why did we move from that in first place. We also, quite frankly, have a history of having one elementary school in Ben City. And again, I don't want to diminish the, the previous administration's justification for it because it was absolutely understandable, completely justified, and it was a wise move at the time. I think at, at this point, though, with Mr. Williams moving on, that it's time to have that discussion and potentially move towards bringing it, it back to being a K five building, which historically, I think most of our community still remembers. It was, it was a K five school for most kids as they went through up until, till recent history. So it would be my intention to name Chris Hansen as the K five building principal, pending board approval, of course. And none of this, of course, needs a vote this evening, and we would have that as a standing agenda item for the next meeting. But then to hire an assistant principal. In, in the process, I think we would be allowed to, I think, easier implement a K five discipline plan. I think having two different systems, while it worked well, I think it also created some sense of confusion, primarily among our kids, because they just get used to one disciplinary system at the primary level, move into a different one, not saying right, wrong, or indifferent, just it was what it was. So I think it's a time to come out of the gates and align, as, as what you know as a board, one of my major focuses is to try to align our programming, our opportunities and everything, get everybody kind of going in the same direction, expectations. And I think that would be best accomplished at the elementary level by, by making this move. But I also wanted to give the board an opportunity to, to ask any questions and, and just kind of see where it goes. And again, this isn't a, a formal ask at this point, this is strictly a discussion item. And then we would put it on the agenda for, for a formal vote. As far as the processes go with O S P I, there's, there's not much to consider. If you, when we were, what we were one school before, and simply notifying them and changing some things in our software packages to report to the state that we're, for the 22, 23 school year, we go, be going back to, instead of having two separate entities in our system, we'd have a single combined entity. So everything would be reported under a K five umbrella. So realistically, like I, I, I told Dale and Josh at our agenda meeting, I want to give you all the opportunity to direct to that and, and ask any questions. And if there's anything that I need to, to make more formal for next meeting, to be prepared to do that. And obviously, Mrs. Hansen would be here to answer any questions. But that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at.
Be easier on you, wouldn't it?
A little bit.
Like I can see, we're having one ship with one captain, it'd be better than two smaller ships with two captains.
I think, you know, in response to that, I know, I don't think that there was necessarily anything wrong with having two principals in two smaller buildings. I think from a standpoint of individual management, it made a lot of sense. I think that, that moving forward with higher expectations of, whether it be students or staff or anyone in general, I think having similar expectations across the entire spectrum of the, of the elementary, I think is going to be a positive for students and staff.
Any other questions or discussion?
I love the ending, but I'm one of those old people that remembers, that that's the way it always was.
Appreciate that. I'm older than you, so thank you for that. I think we got you by a couple of months, but
She endured it.
Yeah, exactly.
Kindergarten to high school.
That sounds like a good option to me. Almost get some support with the assistant principal.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's a lot to oversee, so make sure that she's supported with a vice principal and maybe counselor, or, you know, just have to help her handle the behavior.
Yeah. Along those same lines, obviously, I'm not going to post her as an assistant principal until, you know, the board was aware that that was where we were going with it. But the elementary counselor position hits open tomorrow. It's been open in district as required by the collective bargaining agreement for the five days, five days was up today. So tomorrow, the switch will be flipped and it happens automatically in the system where it gets sent out to all of the, the individual websites and things, links around the state. And then I know that we've spoken with the E S D coordinator, who meets with all of the regional counselors. And she's going to forward our posting to all the counselors. So that, that within those networks of other people around the region, one of the things I know about any type of a specialty position, whether it's a counselor, an assistant principal, you tell the people who currently have the position, because they always know people who are coming up through the grapevine. So that's actually not something I, I counted on, but I found that out today and that's going to be a, a good, good help for us, quite frankly, so.
Okay.
Okay. With that, then I'll, I'll just plan on having a something for the, the board to approve and consent agenda regarding some administrative changes and then give you an update as far as any OSPI concerns. Okay? That's all I have, thank you.
Any other comments or? I guess we'll move into board comments.
I'll say I really enjoyed attending the kindergarten team. Mrs. Davis, a pleasure in watching baseball team in the college place. I don't think they've done that before, so that's so exciting.
Hello, guys, I, I met with Ms. Alexander. I came home, seems like she's doing a pretty good job. And she wishes she had a little bit more time with the kids, you know, but that's something that's, because that would be the works. I got one more reading with their, this week, this Thursday, so.
And I was able to be on the panel that did interviews for the vacancy at the high school level for the head football coach. So thank you for, Mr. Denbore, for inviting me to do that. And it's a great process with a lot of cross-section people, they will be a part of that. So excited that we got some good candidates. Excited to see Joe in there.
Yeah.
I did make my way over to the FFA's flower sale and some beautiful stuff. The weather wasn't very nice to them, but they seemed to be doing pretty well and came home with some gorgeous flowers.
Hope you're going to get those in tonight, it's supposed to freeze.
Then I will do that.
So tired as well.
Yes.
All right. So I have no comment. Well, if that's it, then we'll declare this meeting adjourned and thank you all for participating in the report.